Sounds better.
Better, but he was having a hard time getting from bedroom to back door.
Yeah, he can't walk.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Help by with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for another great day. We want to thank you for this winter weather we're enjoying now. We want to ask you to look over our meeting to let us all, you know, treat each other with respect, let us all can bring discernment and your will to the things that we have to face tonight so that we can rule in a wise manner. That is, uh, we ask that you look over all of our first responders, all of our law enforcement that are out there trying their best to keep us all safe. Things in Jesus's name we ask, amen.
Bye. I say. I'm.
Thank you, be seated. If I could remind you to please silence your cell phones. Uh, we do have a quorum here tonight. Four or five commissioners are present. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to read the minutes, uh, from the November nineteenth meeting and also to review the press release from the December third meeting, uh, suspending that, uh, that, uh, meeting for that evening. If there are no additions or amendments to the minutes and the press release, I'd like a motion for approval.
No move.
Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Gentlemen, we've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight's, uh, meeting. Uh, if there are no additions, I need a motion for approval.
No move.
Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda as it stands. As is four zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on January fifth, two thousand and twenty one, in these chambers at six P M. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Jennifer Neal, and she'll, uh, give you a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. I know some of you have been to, uh, one of these meetings before, some of you may have not, but if you'd like to comment on anything in our public hearing, or if you'd like to come to the, to the microphone and give us a comment during the public section of our comment period tonight, raise your hand, we'll bring you up, and I'd like to, to give you three to five minutes, uh, to, uh, to give us your thoughts. Um, and I, uh, would like to take an opportunity to the folks that, uh, were scheduled to be here last meeting. We, uh, we had a couple of unforeseen things, uh, take place. Uh, Commissioner Wilder was on a, a scheduled hunt out in Nebraska, uh, that he had planned probably six or eight months ago. Um, uh, Commissioner Dempsey has shown up with COVID, and, uh, he, he was in pretty bad shape. He's doing okay now, and, uh, he's having a little difficulty with his wind, and I don't think he'd mind me telling you all that. And, and I had to come up, uh, last minute. I ended up having a stint, uh, at one forty-five that Thursday afternoon. So, we were, we were short a couple of men, and again, I apologize to you. In the thirteen years I've been on here, that's the first time we've ever had to cancel a meeting because of lack of a quorum, and I do apologize to you guys for that, and, uh, because it, it's important that we, we open ourselves up and take care of you, but they were circumstances beyond our control. So again, I apologize and appreciate you being here tonight and appreciate your understanding. Uh, with that being said, um, we've got one, uh, public hearing that I'll open back up on unfinished business. It's a major revision on file RZ two zero dash one one dash zero eight. Mr. Butler.
There's a request for a plan revision of two two nine South Bel Air Road, currently zoned S one special, doesn't use as a sports performance and fitness training facility. Location of the property on the west side of South Old Bel Air Road, south of the Hamptons of Baldwin Lake. It was a current zoning property, again, zoned S one back in two thousand and eighteen. Yeah, primarily around residential properties, uh, with R one, R two, as a north and south and, uh, east as well. Into the north, you do have, uh, a school, zoned S one. This aerial view of the property, with the existing buildings on it, also the existing site, the entrance to the site, the plot of the property, and the constructed plan on the property. So before, uh, this request, we had a lot more detail in terms of the narrative. The revisions to the narrative took out the numbers of clients, um, you know, the schedule itself. Although the schedule has been sent this evening, uh, the Mr. Bowers is, uh, is free to talk about it if you'd like to. Uh, we have not had the time to review that, so it's just kind of a, if he wants to present, he can. Uh, the, the revision, again, took out all the clients. From our stand, from our standpoint, that basically says, we have no limit to how many people can be on this property outside of potentially parking requirements and also what fire code will allow you to have within the buildings. That's about a hundred and thirty-four people inside these buildings, uh, from fire codes. So it's something that, you know, quite a few more than the twelve that we originally, I had talked about back in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, due to that, staff does have several conditions that says that, you know, yes, you could do this here, but you're going to turn this into a commercial endeavor, you know, much more than it is currently. They would require putting in paved parking. Uh, there isn't really a really clear way to say you must have this number of parking spaces or something like this. You can look at it several different ways, you know, like is there no commercial use? You could look at it as, you know, what's the closest approximation of that that uses people? Uh, generally speaking, you're probably looking at a minimum of thirty parking spaces on the site. Those have to be paved. Um, currently, there's maybe a dozen that are paved on the site. You're looking at adding substantially more parking to this for this to work. Um, and again, would require an engineer's site plan. Uh, this is actually the, a piece of the plan that we saw with the original, um, rezoning that basically built this driveway. Um, in terms of improvements to the site, they have agreed to move the driveway basically to the south, uh, to kind of get it away from the adjacent property, also put in a, a buffer as well. In terms of future land use, uh, this is within a residential area, uh, the expansion to the site, uh, will, could potentially have some, some concern with that. Um, however, there is ways to mitigate that with requirements of the site plan. In terms of staff recommendation, uh, the staff doesn't recommend approval conditions. Several conditions on this one. Uh, again, will require an engineer's site plan in accordance with applicable county codes, again, to include not limited to section nine dash one thirty-three, nine dash one forty. Also comments within this that reference building code, fire code. This would essentially open them up for every code section that we have that would, would apply in this situation. Uh, work showing the progress of a site plan will be completed within a hundred and eighty days of approval. That, again, basically six months, he hasn't completed all of the work. Uh, he had to, some of the plans should occur within thirty days of approval by the request by the Board of Commissioners, uh, with the current review times. That's probably going to work, but it may be pushed a little bit. And also with some of the noise from the site, all garage doors will have to be secured so that they cannot be opened. Uh, proposed buffer, we plan to create an opaque buffer in the property and properties to the north. Uh, we'll determine that at, with our landscape architect. That's one of those that, better to kind of go on the site and say, okay, what's going to work in here instead of saying it's going to be X number of feet and that sort of thing. Any future expansion on the properties, including building or structure, will require S one revision is the last condition. Uh, we do have some representatives in the building standards department here at the stadium. If there's any questions on that side, that includes staff recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, would anybody from the county like to go ahead and add to, uh, Mr. Butler's information at this time? Okay, with that being said, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward, give us your name, home address, and any additional information you'd like us to have?
Actually, Michelle.
Sure.
I think maybe I can.
Okay, sure. Come forward, give us your name and home address.
All right. Um, my name is Michelle Harrison, and, um, my home address, fifty-eight twelve Lynette Lane, Grovetown, Georgia. I'm a practicing attorney here, representing Mr. Bowers in this, and hopefully, I'm going to try to pare this down a little bit to give maybe some more of the answers that apparently haven't been given to this point, because it seems like there is a request to make this commercial property and putting in paved parking lots and those kinds of things, which actually, I think, defeats not only the purpose for Mr. Bowers, but also creates more issues for what the, the people and the adjoining landowners are actually complaining of. You go and put in a bunch of, uh, concrete parking pads, it actually diminishes the way the property looks. The property looks substantially the same as it looked when the prior landowners used it. Um, it's beautifully landscaped, all of the landscaping is there, and the problem, I think, is if we put that in, it of course diminishes the appearance of it, also diminishes the use of it. And I think where all of this has kind of been derailed is because when, I think, whoever went out and met with Mr. Bowers, it was indicated, what in the pot, in the future could you possibly use this property for? And he has big dreams and big ventures. Unfortunately, those big dreams and big ventures are, he's probably going to outgrow this property. We get that, he gets that, he understands that. But for right now, even what he's doing, he could do within the zoning, and how he's had to do that has, by making more classes, and I think he's presented the schedule. If y'all haven't had it, I did kind of, I printed out one that I quickly did, but he's having to now make more classes that are smaller. So what happens with that is you've got more traffic that are coming in and out, because this is not a parking facility. This is a fitness and performance training. Sixty percent of his clients are under the age of sixteen years old. They're being dropped off by parents. So as these classes are rotating, then you've got the traffic there. If he was able to have sixteen students in each building, then the time changes, just like the school that is on the other side of this, then the time changes, you wouldn't have those traffic jams. There's not the need for the additional parking. This is not a commercial use, it's not going to be a Gold's Gym. They don't even have equipment. It can't be anytime fitness. You can't just go at any time you want to. I mean, just by virtue of the business plan itself, limits the number of people, because there has to be a personal trainer there. He's not intending now to, um, place any new buildings. He certainly understands, we respect, I have advised and counseled. If any of those things were to be put into place, those things would have to be, um, addressed, new accommodations, codes, all of the things that are required by Columbia County. What he's asking now is to do the exact same thing that he has been doing, but just to allow the increase in the classes to make larger classes and less classes. So sixty percent, I think, of his clientele are under the age of sixteen, forty percent are adults. He does fitness and performance training. And it's, you know, I, I was talking to him, I've been a longtime client of his and, and a friend. I mean, I'll be quite honest, and I can just tell you, if he says it, that's what's going to happen. Sometimes you can't get him to focus, and so, because he does have big dreams, he's an optimist, but we understand the limitations created by this property. I think to require a, the site plan that wants to put in more concrete, that really defeats, I think, the purpose. He really does want to minimize the number of, um, people that are coming in. He's willing to put up the buffers, he's willing to, um, keep the doors down on that side, he's willing to move the, um, the, I think, the driveway that goes in. All of those things, I think, were initially talked about. He wants to work through that. He doesn't want to be a nuisance neighbor. As a matter of fact, I would love it if I could have a facility where I live that's like this, that's in walking distance to where I live. This is an amenity. This is not Gold's Gym. This is not, um, anytime fitness. This is an amenity. You can't go there without him or another personal trainer. So, and he's not going to be able to employ a bunch of personal trainers. There's no equipment there for him to use, nor is that stuff going to be there. It's very minimal. It's more the work in the body. He works. Our Columbia County athletes, it is a resource. He is a resource, and.
If I could get you a hold of me. Sir, when I, can I ask you to move, uh, remove your cap, please? Thank you. So, on that note, um, have you reviewed the notes or watched the video of the planning meeting where we approved this operation?
Originally?
Ms. Harris, yes.
No, I have not.
Okay.
Uh, but I do know that it was a.
And you haven't read the minutes either.
I have not, no. But I, again, I certainly understand that this is outgrown and, and what the concerns were.
Because I hear what you're saying, and I understand that he wants to do these things now, but when he stood in front of us, two years ago, what was it, two years ago, two thousand and eighteen, when he stood in front of us, we asked some very poignant questions about his growth or desire to grow, which we had actually had a, a, a short banter about not wanting to grow, that only want twelve people. That's fine. I can do that. I don't want anymore. This is just a small thing. I don't want to do any more than that. Uh, was not willing to move the driveway, uh, was not interested in buffers. Um, so what's changed?
I'll tell you what's changed. The people, the interest, that's what's changed.
But that's fine, but we wouldn't have approved it at that point if the high levels, I mean, and not from a personal standpoint, but, but the, the, the rules of the county, the numbers that are, that, that are, seem to be going through now, require more of a commercial location and not an exception to a residential location. And, and so, when, when we were very, um, adamant about just twelve people, it's going to be real quiet, music's going to be really low, people really wear their headsets, they, so you don't hear music. I mean, I remember all this like it was yesterday. Um, you know, I'm, I'm happy you grow. I mean, I'm a business person. I'm glad for growth. Business is good. Uh, but I, I think, I think you bait and switched us. That's my opinion.
And I, I certainly understand that what he came, what he's doing now and what his business has grown into is not what he anticipated it. I will tell you, knowing him for a long time, he's had this kind of business, this kind of operation for years in different places. He has never grown to the size or the interest. I don't even want to say size, because quite honestly, he could minimize his classes and do exactly what he's doing, but it's going to create more of a nuisance. If he does that, if he meets this S one without y'all allowing him to expand just the clients to an amount that actually diminishes the nuisance that's going on now because of the change in classes, he could meet that, but it creates more of an issue. It creates more of traffic jams, but he could, he could operate within it. As far as the, the music, we understand the complaints. There's been those complaints, but we videoed where the music's coming from. It's not this property. I go in the morning at six A M. Most, sometimes, but it's been less frequent th- these days. So it was once last month, but regardless, we don't play the music, because I have to hear him. It's him coaching people who are there. There's not an, he doesn't say, go sit on the leg press, because there's no leg press. You have to listen to what they're saying. So it's, it really is, this would allow less of a nuisance, get a particular neighbor where they weren't counting vehicles. Quite honestly, that's why the number, we asked the number to be removed, to stop any obsession about a number. What is, what's the difference with the number? It's about, what are you bringing to the community? Are you creating a nuisance? But I've never been to a facility that he's had before this facility that's had more than twelve people. I'll be honest, I'm not going to hurt his feelings, but that, he didn't get up here and lie to you then because he didn't expect it. I wouldn't have expected it. I probably told him he was crazy. He's changed places four or five times since I've been with him, um, and, you know, but he can only do so much. So there are other trainers who would want to come in, help him with that. He wants to do those things. He wants to do that for our children. He wants to do that for our adults. But I'll tell you what's also happened. COVID's happened. So now people are recognizing fitness is just as important as the education they're going to get on the S one on the other side of this neighborhood. This is an amenity, and I am hard pressed, I really do think that the, the majority of the neighbors would think that this is an amenity. And we really do want to put reasonable things in place to make it an amenity, to make it a positive thing for this neighborhood.
Ms. Harrison, I'm going to ask you to close this up so we can open up the floor.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and I think that's all really what I would have to say.
One comment? Yes, sir.
Um, COVID is exactly kind of what's thrown us into.
And, Mr. Bowers, go ahead and give us your name and home address.
Brian Bowers.
Just for the record.
Owner, and all this has been, that property did get transferred into my name. I don't know if that was on the record or not, but it was something that I was leasing to own. But, um, I, I would like to address the bait and switch thing, just because this was not a bait and switch. You know, I believe Mr. Cox is in, in marketing. I mean, you, you hope for the business to grow, right? Um, be able to impact more people, that's, which is what we've called the property, Impact Farm. And throughout COVID, all of a sudden, kids are not able to go to school, and they're not getting recessed. They're not able to be a part of their sports teams. Well, I, I got flooded with phone calls and interest. Okay, so then, now, I'm all throughout the day training people, trying to figure out, like, are we going to be able to continue to open these doors and provide this service, or are we going to get shut down? I'm thankful we're living, you know, Columbia County where we are pro-business, and that hasn't happened. Um, but that's the struggle of, like, you know, what to do in, in, in operating this business. The struggle for me in regards to scheduling has been stacking four classes now. So now I've got four classes where the parking lots, I got people coming in and out more frequently rather than having just two long classes. And so, it's kind of thrown us into a little bit of a, a whirlwind, but I will say, looking at, for me, looking at South Old Bel Air Road, knowing the other things that are there on South Old Bel Air Road, knowing the amount of property that I have, not just there, but on the other side, um, and the amount of clients that I have in those neighborhoods that tell me all the time, they can't, they don't see anything. There are a few people that are going to be here today that are going to talk about it, right, but they did not want me to be there in the first place. Okay? Uh, yes, it's different now than it was when there was nobody on the property for two years. We now have traffic, but it's not an unreasonable amount of traffic for five and a half acres.
But you also understand there are ordinances that relates to the number of people that you're moving.
Well, I understand that, and that's why I'm asking to come before you and open that up. I don't need to, I don't need, I, I want to say the provision said a hundred and thirty-four people. I mean, I would like, whenever a coach calls me and says, hey, can I bring our basketball team over there, for them to be able to bring a basketball team to me. Uh, I went to Columbia County and, and trained the law officers, you know, the, the SWAT team. They couldn't come out to me. They can't come out to me because I, I can't bring them out right now. You know, that's what I'm faced with. I do not want to open this thing up to where I'm regular. I have a chart that I put together that shows you what our day looks like. You know, there's only a few hours right there, around five thirty to, to, to seven thirty that are hot, you know? Um, and sometimes at four, it'll start a little bit earlier, but the vast majority of the day is just quiet. Now, I've got my guys cutting lawn and, you know, plenty of grass to cut out there. So, I'm asking to be able to expand this thing, but it's not to be able to open it up to just bring tons and tons. If that were the case, and we get to that point, then at that point, then I will move our sports training into something else and do more of my pro guys and college guys here on my property. I also live right next door to it. The last thing that I want is so much traffic coming in and out of my land, creating, you know, damage to the property.
Mr. Bowers, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up so we can get some other input.
Thank you, guys. Fair service.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? And I'll, I'll ask if there's a representative from one of the neighborhoods, if they could come first. Um, who's going to be a representative? I got three people raising their hand going to be a representative. Okay, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Evening. My name is Luke Wilder, fifteen ninety-seven Baldwin Lakes Drive. I just wanted to, to make one simple comment right now. I'm currently serving as the Vice President on the Hamptons Neighborhood Property Owners Association. You heard from some of my other residents, but there's one thing. I read through the, the work that Will Butler did, and thank you for the, for the work on the staff report. I do want to support the condition of a noise and light barrier or buffer between the facility and our neighborhood. I do point to, to the school on the other side, which is now Savannah River Academy. Since they put up their barrier, we have not had any issues. We used to have kids running the neighborhood, making noise. No longer an issue. I believe that's currently in the plan right now for there to be some kind of a buffer as a condition. I do want to support that, and that's really all I wanted to say, is that there's a buffer, I think most of our issues go away.
All right. Thank you. Type of buffer would you, what type of buffer would you suggest if it was your decision?
The current buffer plan, I think, if you look at, I don't, I guess we don't have any pictures, between the ne- neighborhood and Savannah River Academy, trees, bushes, and some kind of a fence. So noise and light barrier.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Uh, evening. I'm Cal McQueen. I live at seven one six Mural Lake Court, which is immediately behind, uh, this thing. Um, as he called it bait and switch, what my co- my D O D colleagues and my former Department of State colleagues called it was mission creep. You know, I got this, so let me go get that. And that's the way I see it. My major complaint throughout the whole thing has been dust and lights. Um, and since our last meeting here, I mentioned the lights. They have been turning off the lights on the garages, and I appreciate that. I can't see the ones on the metal light, uh, the metal building because they have a, a step band parked there, so it blocks the lights to my bedroom. The, the dust, we haven't complained because it's, you know, try to be a good neighbor. But when the weather's nice, we like to open the windows up and let the air go through the house. Can't do that anymore. Can only open the front windows. I spent a substantial amount of money putting a sunroom on the back of my house, and my wife used to, and she still does, sit out there and do her morning prayers. I've got a cold. But she used to, when the weather was nice, open all of those windows on the sunroom, and it worked fine. It was wonderful. She can't do that anymore because of the dust. Um, I, I was really floored that they recommended to approve this time, even with conditions, because the last time, the, the last meeting, I have those notes, and yes, the numbers were removed, but was the intent removed? And they were talking about putting, uh, no, not there, over here, resurfacing and putting, uh, a sports field in there with forty to fifty kids, talking about having birthday parties. I mean, do like I did. I, I had my fifty thousand. That's Savannah.
Mr. McQueen, could you address us, please, sir?
Yeah. Here, yeah. There's places where you can have birthday parties that don't include forty to fifty kids in my backyard. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that. He talked about summer camps in the original application for November. Uh, he doesn't say that now. To me, summer camp is kids running around having fun, which they should, but not in my backyard. Um, tailgate parties. No, that just doesn't do it. Vehicles. Tuesday night, I think it was, there were.
If I can ask you to wrap it up here, about is your.
Okay, there were twenty to thirty vehicles there on Tuesday night evening. That's a lot of vehicles to go on. Uh, they had two points, two people wrote letters or notes about supporting it. One of them's address is a little over a mile away. The other one is about half a mile away. Not in their backyard. We are in, I think mine is right here. The green giant trees, they're a cedar. Well, I have experience with cedar. They have pollination. I have bad, uh, allergies. I take allergy medicine year round. In the spring, every year except this year, because we've been restricted, I've had, I've ended up in the emergency room at Fort Gordon with my allergies. And I don't know how the pollination is on these trees. If it's like a cedar bloom, we can't have that.
All right, sir. With that, I'm.
And he needs to put a fence. He put a fence between us, between him and the other place that he lives in, a wooden fence. That'd be better.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Russ Dorn. I reside at seven oh eight Mural Lake Court in the Hamptons. Um, I will disagree with the representative from our neighborhood. I do not believe that a buffer zone is going to fix the issues that are here. Um, Mr. Henderson used a term of bait and switch. I would have to agree with you. My first thing, issue with this when it came out in two thousand and eighteen is why here? And that still hasn't been addressed. However, what I've learned, and I take no joy in this, I know Mr. Bowers is a praying man because we attend the same church. That's why I don't take any joy in speaking up here against a fellow church member. However, the original ten acres that was purchased for this facility was owned by the Testino family, which is also a member of the same church. Uh, it went on the market, uh, prior to the two eighteen closing, for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and right before it sold, it went down to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Pretty big swing, which he leased. I bring that up to say that there has been a plan in place this entire time, and I would. And I would like to gently remind the board that he has not done what he said he would do in the original narrative. Matter of fact, he went against it almost immediately. Said he was going to have four people in the mornings from 5:30 to, to 7:00. My backyard looks right over that driveway. I'm glad to know his legal counsel is here, is one of those people, because it disturbs my home every day. And the thing is, it's eight to 12 cars every morning. So he's exceeded that number by 50%. Now, you say it's an estimation, and that's the way out of it, but if you've got a estimate to do a roof for $15,000, you got it done, and then the builder comes back and says it's $30,000, it's a 50% increase, just like his 50% increase is an estimation, is that good business? I contend that he knows how much of the traffic flow is going to be on his property, he's known that since then, and has known it now. With legal counsel, in these documents, it's not only important about what is stated in here, it's what's not stated. What's not stated is the future intent down the road. We're talking about, for example, the ground coverage with the green giant arbortives, okay? Are they going to be this tall when they're planted? Are they going to be this tall when they're planted? We don't know. They grow, what, three feet a year? There's a big difference between that, I, I don't think that that's going to be, uh, something that's going to be acceptable. The other thing in here is about the football field. What's going to stop that field from being constructed in the future? Because the current condition doesn't say anything about a football field, it only relates to the buildings. And I have pictures here just to show, for example, of what that looks like at night when they have their camps. Now, if he gets that football field built, he's going to need lights, and it's going to be a lot more than this. So now we're talking about air pollution from whatever light source it is, light pollution on top of that. My concern is that in two years, we're going to basically have a miniature version of, of, of the park that's over on Columbia Road in our backyard. He hasn't done what he said that he's going to do. How can you, as the board, trust him down the road to do what he says he's going to do now with this number of revision that's going on? That's my contention tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against? Yes, sir, we'll, we'll go your way, and then ma'am, we'll go with you. Please give us your name and home address.
My name is Kevin Kilburn, I live at 710 Mural Lake Court, which is directly, actually beside Mr. Dorn. So, uh, if you don't mind, I will start my timer, so I don't go over time. Okay, uh, I'm just going to reiterate some of the things he's already said. First and foremost, I'm going to recommend that you recommend that this be disapproved in its entirety with no conditions whatsoever. Uh, and the reason for that is because Athlete, Ryan Bowers, has not done anything he was supposed to do according to his narrative since day one. Dorn said some of that already, uh, and I believe that all of you read the document that I submitted that outlined everything, sir, you did?
Yes, I did.
This, we all did.
We all did.
Okay, so I don't have to go into all the details of that, so you see what I'm talking about.
Cover new ground.
You know, step by step nuisance that's been caused by not following the mitigation measures for noise. And it's not just noise, it's nuisance in general. And I'm, so I apologize, I got a little bit derailed here because I intended to talk about some things, it's already been covered. But, you know, I've seen some of the documents or statements from clients of Athlete touting how great it is and wonderful it is, and that's fine, you know, that, that's their, their opinion. But what they can't talk about is the nuisance and the noise, uh, because they don't live on Mural Lake Court. And if you don't live there 24/7 like we do, then you're not going to see a lot of stuff. And in fact, you know, even Ms. Hanson, Harrison Hanson, I can't read my own writing, said, you know, they don't play music in the morning. Sorry, you do, uh, you do play music, uh, maybe not all the time, but you do. Saw that in my video, uh, if you watch my video, the music has, it is played. And I say that because, uh, it's, it's very deceitful to throw this out there and say, we don't play music, we don't make noise. But you do, you make a lot of noise there. Uh, and two things I'd like to hit before my time runs out in terms of nuisance. Number one, there's a lot of traffic that comes in there in the morning at 5:30, 5:45. And there's one car, uh, that comes in there every morning blaring music and every other phrase, it's N-word this, N-word that. That's offensive, okay, care who you are, that's an offensive word, and I don't want to hear that. Uh, and then number two, on September 28th, my wife and I, uh, actually my whole family, were conducting a little memorial ceremony for my brother-in-law, uh, who had passed away two years prior. Retired Army veteran, 47 years old, died suddenly, uh, served three combat tours, uh, one Desert Storm, so he goes back a little ways. And during that memorial ceremony, a group of kids from Athlete thought it would be funny to come right beside my fence and mock and ridicule us as we were playing taps, the bugle call. That's unacceptable, uh, that's offensive, uh, and I won't tolerate that ever again. But I hold Ryan Bowers accountable for this type of behavior because it's his business. One of his trainers was standing right there, and I tried to get his attention and yell at him, ignored me, and went on. And since I've got a few more time, I, I know it's going to come up, if it hasn't already, uh, yeah, there's been some yelling. I've yelled at some of the kids over there for being, use the phrase, little brats, uh, sticking their hands through my fence, climbing over the neighbor's fence, looking over, uh, you know, just doing things that just shouldn't be done. And with the proper adult supervision, I wouldn't have had to yell at them, their parents should have been yelling at them, or one of the trainers should have been, maybe not yelling, but correcting them. And then, of course, you know, got the, uh, the kids that thought it would be funny to come over there and ridicule us. So the reason I bring that up is that no word that's come out of my mouth has been as vile as the N-word that blares on that radio system every morning that I have to listen to. And no amount of my yelling is so heinous as to interrupt a memorial ceremony for my deceased brother-in-law, who is, who's my brother in arms. That's unacceptable. So I'm asking this be denied because Ryan Bowers doesn't care. He's thumbed his nose at Dana Rhodes with zoning enforcement, he continues to make noise, he continues to do stuff, and has no disregard, it has just a flagrant disregard for any type of authority. And I think this is the only way to teach him that, look, you need to abide by the rules.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward and give us your name and home address and any information you'd like us to consider?
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Tammy Busby. Uh, my husband Rick and I own the property at 225 South Old Bel Air Road. This is the quarter-mile driveway that is flagpolt in between the Hamptons and Mr. Bowers' property. I just wanted to come tonight and share with you that we've lived, owned our property for 25 years. During that time, we've had three landowners on the property Mr. Bowers owns, two companies, one rent ran for over 30 years there, out of the same buildings he used. And hands down, he has been the most agreeable and neighborly neighbor, that's the only way I can say it. Any tiny, small issues we've had, we've had just pick up the phone and say, hey, Ryan, need to talk to you about something. He is responsive, he comes, he talks, sits down and talks with us about it, and we come to a very mutual agreement. He's, I'm not sure if any of these people have ever taken the time to speak to him.
Ms. Busby, what issues have you had?
Uh, the only issue we had was when he ran a, um, promotion for his new weight loss program, when he first started that, he had some new members join at that time, like probably seven, eight, I don't know how many, but at one time. And one day, my husband and I were coming in and out of our property and encountered two or three cars that were, had jumped over the break in the fence and using our driveway, which we only have a 30-foot wide driveway, including the grass shoulders on the other side. And I just called Ryan and I said, listen, obviously, you get, you're busy with this new program, nobody's told these people about the driveway situation and that which ones, who's this who's, never had another car, never had another problem. We come in and out, I especially, come in and out of my driveway four, five, six times a day. I have never, ever seen any children in my driveway or on the other side of my driveway next to these Hamptons. If I did, I would immediately call Ryan, because with our driveway being impassable, I mean, it's head on, straight on, and there is a dumpster there, and there is his black truck over there. If people were to come into our, children were to come into our driveway from those directions, either from the Hamptons or from his property, they would have blind spots. And no one, including us or UPS, would be able to see these children until it was too late. So I would have definitely complained about that. I just wanted to let you know that, I mean, I, he's worked very hard, the buildings have all been there, all the lights that are on the building were there for 30 years, for the 25 years I've been there anyway. So, and they were all, always on because they had, uh, electrical company trucks, uh, with a fleet of up to six trucks at one time, and they had collectible cars, even a NASCAR in there, so they had high security needs. They've always been on, so I'm, I'm sorry for them, but that's not new. So I hope that you do at least consider his request, just knowing that if they have problems, if they come to him and talk to him about their problems, he will be agreeable, he will try to work with them as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tammy, what was there before him? What, what?
Tolar Electric was there for over 30 years. They, they didn't move out until Mr. Testino listed the property for sale. They were actually renting from him after he purchased it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against? Yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll go here and then here, then we'll close the public hearing.
My name is Allison Dorn and I live at 708 Mural Lake Court. We have on good authority that Mr. Bowers has been actively looking for other properties in Columbia County. I know for a fact that he looked at my in-law's house that is for sale on Columbia Road, but was really not trying to go through a real estate agent, so he's actively looking for a deal somewhere else that is residential. Also, I guess our question is for the neighborhood, if it does get approved and he does decide to grow the way he has and he does go to another property, what happens with the zoning and what prevents something else from coming in and taking over, um, that property? That's all I have tonight.
So the S1 zoning that is in effect would be with the land. And so if Mr. Bowers leaves whenever, tomorrow, next day, whenever, um, that property's there, somebody wants to come in and pick that up, they could, there is a time limit, but, no, not a time, excuse me, not for S1, sorry. So, you know, they could pick up that S1 and, and continue. Now, if they wanted to do something else, they would have to come back through and do, go through the revision of the S1.
But the, but the S1 is specifically for this use, no other use?
Correct, and whatever conditions are, uh, attached to the property with the S1.
I just don't understand why he's going for all these residential locations. It doesn't make sense to anyone here. I mean, wouldn't it be easier just to try to find a place that's already zoned for that? I mean, why residential? Why disrupt people that live in a quiet neighborhood? Our area is quiet. Really, the only noise before this that we ever heard was, um, there's a fire department that's on Oakley Percol, and we would hear the fire department leaving it out every now and then. But, um, we chose that area because it is quiet. We used to live in Ivy Falls and Columbia Road, and there was a lot of growth, it was a lot of, um, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the shopping center that's in front of it, and they were expanding it, and there was a lot of traffic. And that's one reason that we decided to move on in closer to Bel Air Road. So, um, when we lived there, we lived, we were like, um, one of the first homes that are on, um, Mural Lake Court. And there were two homes that were built right next to us after we, um, after we bought our home. And there was nowhere near the noise from the homes being built next door than there were coming from them. So it's just, whatever he's saying today as far as the noise, honestly, it's just not true.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, come up, give us your name, home address, and we'll close the public hearing after you finish.
Sure, my name's Eric Kennedy, I live at 218 Hornsby Lane in Evans, Georgia. I used to live across the street in Greenleaf Park. I currently work full-time for Stevens Creek Church, but at 6 o'clock in the morning, I coach, uh, the 6:00 AM class. I want to support Ryan and what he's doing for several reasons. When you said the prayer, you asked that we all have just a little bit of discernment, so I just asked that everybody have discernment while I speak. I understand what neighbors go through when you have something new that changes. I was on the board in Greenleaf, and that's, um, forgive me, that's a hell of a job. Especially when you're trying to appease and, and please all the neighbors. I've dealt with this person, this person, this person about a yard issue, or, oh, this house is rented, or, I don't like the way this flowerbed looks, or they got tomatoes planted in their side yard, or they got a fence and I can see their boat, and it just goes on and on and on. There's going to be hostility within the neighborhood, whether there's a gym behind them or not. This road is a pass-through. I've driven through this neighborhood to get out to Columbia Road a little bit quicker, or from Columbia Road to get to Bel Air quicker. I say all of that to say that, um, what Ryan's doing is for the community. If you guys have ever been to this gym, he's got a wall of pictures of people, and this, I don't even get paid to go there and do this. I don't want pay. There are before and after pictures of people that go in there, and they trust us to give them a meal plan and a workout schedule and a personal trainer. People change their life in these situations. Some people face addictions with food and stuff like that, and it's important that they have places like this to go to because it's a small group, like we have at church, just small groups of people. So I have Zen Planner app, which is an app we use for all of our clients. Every morning, I'll look and see who signed up, it could be six people, it could be nine people. We've got it set to where we do a big clean between each, uh, workout station, um, so that way nobody's getting, uh, the Corona Cooties and all that kind of stuff, so we keep everything wiped down. But I'll tell you this story, um, I was pulling out one day, and it was an afternoon, and it is busier in the afternoon. Nobody wants to get up early in the morning and go work out before they go to work. But I'll coach usually on Thursday evenings, and it is a little bit busier. And there are people coming, but most, right now especially, they're inside these buildings, uh, these warehouses and these shops, and this old garage back here in the back where I coach at. But the story I want to tell you is when I was pulling out one day, I see all these houses, and they, and they are close, and they're beautiful homes. But Ryan was out here in this field, and he's doing something that, that I don't do as much as I should, but he was working with this kid, and he was hiking a ball, and he had the kid running, and he was passing a football to him. And I would want to live in a neighborhood where I knew that these instances that these folks have, have had complaints about, I, I hate that for them. But there are, or there is a place in their backyard where they can send their kid or their grandkid to just work out and have a good time. I mean, I, I remember stopping my car before I pulled out, and I said, well, that's just awesome. He's hiking a football to a kid and just having him run a play. A lot of dads, we're so busy these days, we don't take time to do that. We lose that in our life, our go-to. And, and now we pay for convenience and everything else, and, and we pay folks to do this kind of stuff for us. I, I'm going to take my kids there when they need more conditioning for the sports they play. I look forward to it. I hope that there can be, with discernment, a, a common, uh, appeal that can be made between all the neighbors and Ryan and Anna, because they have a great family. These people, they, they go to church, they live in a great county, we all live in a great county. But he's not out to, to hurt anybody, he's out to serve us. He's out to serve our kids, our grandkids, our nieces and our nephews. And he uses people like me and Cade and his wife, Megan, and, you know, we get to watch these people transform. They go from being a little bit overweight and losing body fat. I measured a lady this morning that lost five pounds and she started crying. You can't just give, get that anywhere. So I think it's, I think what we're doing is a great thing. I think if maybe some of the neighbors, um, like, uh, Ms. Busby said, if they've just gotten to know Ryan and Anna and, and maybe just hung out with us sometimes, we don't want to throw a bunch of parties. I'm too old, I can't party that much. But I do, I look forward to working out with these people because I watch them change. They come in there and they struggle, and they push, and they push, and they just have a good time. We, we have good community, we text at night, we're just encouraging each other, and so we're not, we're not, there's not drama there. There's not drama, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table, and we'll have discussion after that.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to disapprove, file RZ 201108, may...
Major revision to S1 at 229 South Alphabellar Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor to disapprove? Raise your right hand. Motion to disapprove carries 4-0. All right, we'll leave the public hearing and go to Ms. Mystery. We have two massage operator licenses.
Yes, sir. The first one is a massage operator license for Cheryl Connell and Zari Rodriguez, and they are business transformations, massage and bodywork, and they apply to relocate to 3506 Professional Circle, Suite A. They all meet their requirements, and staff recommends approval.
All right, gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Cheryl Connell, Zari Rodriguez, DBA Transformations Massage and Bodywork at 3506 Professional Circle, Suite A, mobile and mo- mobile massage service.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? To approve, passes 4-0. Ms. Mystery, we're still with you. Massage operator's license for Catherine Keaton.
Thank you. This is an application for Catherine Keaton. She's relocating to 548 Blackburn Drive, and she meets all the requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions? I need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator license for Catherine Keaton for home premise and mobile massage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, Hawes Creek at Greenpoint.
Yes, sir. This is a sign review for the entrance signage at Hawes Creek at Greenpoint. This is located off Wrightsboro Road and is part of the larger Greenpoint PUD development. This is the location of the property on the south side of Wrightsboro Road. This is their large lot section, basically follows RA requirements. Part of the zoning conditions were that Planning Commission needed to review the location and the dimensions of the signs. So this is their proposed entrance sign. It has an overall height of eight feet with a stone base and then the wood post. It includes the Greenpoint logo and the Hawes Creek sign for a total of just under 13 square feet. This meets the height and the dimensional requirements for county code. And the sign is located just to the east of the entrance, outside of the utility Eastman. It does meet all the setback requirements for our sign code, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? I need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition the sign for Hawks Creek at Greenpoint.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question. What kind of condition?
Yeah.
I'm just reading from the motion sheet.
Okay, you must have the old motion sheet. There was a condition when it was going to the previous meeting, but they've relocated the sign, so the condition's not relevant anymore.
Then I restate my motion to, I make a motion to approve as-is sign for Hawks Creek at Greenpoint.
Seconds to hold?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, I guess we need a conceptual plan for Crawford Creek South Phase 10.
Yes, sir. This is off William Smith Boulevard on 23 acres. It is part of the Crawford Creek planned unit development. And this is the general location of the overall parcel, and the aerial of the site, it is, of course, currently undeveloped at this time. At the time of their rezoning, this was the general kind of layout that was presented. This was not reviewed as a concept plan at that time, but it does give you an idea of where this falls within the overall layout. This is where you can see the previous plats, you can see how the layouts kind of shifted as they've come through for this development. So this is the location up here at the north-ish end of the site for Section 10. And this will be the final section of Crawford Creek South. Concept plan is fairly straightforward. It's a single cul-de-sac road that connects from the existing road in Section 8. Cul-de-sacs are discouraged under our subdivision code, but the kind of remaining area on the site kind of only lends itself to a cul-de-sac. This configuration does create a cul-de-sac that's approximately 2,000 feet in length that does require specific approval from Planning Commission because it is longer than the 700 feet allowed in code. But with this, with the layout with the property they have to work with at this point, staff does not have any concerns with granting them that approval. Water and sewer services are connecting from Section 8 also, and then into the sewer line in the creek. The concepts in it will include 64 and 68-foot lots, which will follow the 60 and 65-foot lot width standards from the PUD. They do have side setbacks of 10 feet per their zoning requirements. There are a couple of concerns to be addressed from other departments as they prepare their preliminary plat. That includes revising the front setback for the lot to address distance from the waterline, as well as a couple of lots that appear to encroach on the existing or proposed detention pond from Phase 8. But overall, staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
This is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the concept plan for Crawford Creek.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you. A conceptual plan for Lowell Water Phase 2.
Yes, sir. This is the second phase of the apartments at Lowell Water. This is part of the Riverwood planned unit development, and they do have 138 units in nine buildings with this concept. This is the location adjacent to the existing section of Lowell Water, and this is the aerial of the site. It is, of course, undeveloped at this time. The rezoning plan included this section as part of the multifamily development, so it is in keeping with their PUD zoning. And this is the concept plan. It is, again, nine buildings around a couple loops. You see, these first two have kind of central greener courtyard spaces, and then you have the single individual building off the parking lot at the end. It's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom plans and does meet the maximum 10-unit-per-acre density allowed under the PUD, and staff is recommending approval.
Not a public hearing, gentlemen, so we'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the concept plan for Lowell Water 2 off Franklin Ridge Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, provisional home occupation for Bald Cypress Camo LLC.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation at 4819 Clark Drive. It is currently zoned R1 and is over the minimum two acres to request the provisional home occupation. And this is the location of the property on Clark Drive, quite a ways off Blanchard Road, and currently zoned R1 and surrounded by similarly zoned property, although that is Georgia Power Station, so maybe not all in residential use. This is the aerial of the site and the general site plan. So the applicant is running a apparel business, they're selling online and shipping the apparel, so they're not having clients come to the residence. They are using their detached garage for inventory storage and instead shipping from the property. The size of the garage meets the 50%, being less than 50% of the house to be allowed as a provisional, and since there's no clients coming to the house, there's really no additional traffic outside of pickup or delivery potentially, which would be similar to any of our residential houses, especially during Christmas, I'm sure. So staff is recommending approval.
Not a public hearing, gentlemen. Do you have any questions to staff? Need a motion to approve, deny or to table?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Bald Cypress Camo at 4819 Clark Drive.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. We've got a couple of final plats tonight. Ms. Montgomery, we're still with you. Final plat for Crawford Creek South Phase 8A.
Yes, sir. This is also off William Smith Boulevard in the Crawford Creek PUD. This is the first 30 lots in Crawford Creek Section 8. It was a larger section with 114 lots in Section 8 as a whole. This section is located kind of in the middle of this parcel, as you can see. And this is the final plat. It is 30 single-family lots with an average lot size of 9,583 square feet and a minimum lot size of 7,722 square feet. Required setbacks are 18 feet from the right-of-way and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. This neighborhood will have sidewalks and street trees on both sides of the road and 1.64 acres of open space in this section. They also, of course, have access to the larger amenities in Crawford Creek. This is the existing site, well, from a couple weeks ago at this point, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. So, gentlemen, no questions. I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Crawford Creek 8A off William Smith Boulevard.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Smith Oaks.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for 11 lots off Rosemont Road. This property is zoned RA, residential agricultural, and this is located out near the intersection of Rosemont Road and Berks Mountain Road, out off Washington Roads. It's a little ways out there. These are larger acreage lots. The smallest lot is 5.32 acres, which well exceeds the minimum for residential agricultural zoning. Minimum setbacks are 45 feet from the right-of-way, and side setbacks are 10 feet, rear 25. And there's a 50-foot buffer along Berks Mountain Road and a 25-foot buffer around the perimeter of the site. The construction is in progress, so while we can review the final plat for the subdivision approval, it won't be released from plan review. They won't be able to pull the building permits until the road is actually done, the as-built's approved. So with that caveat, staff is recommending approval of the final plat.
This is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, if there are no questions, I need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
I have one question. For it to get to this point, it has to go through the perk test, and there was a process to that, and it's, so at this point, it's passed that process, everything is fine.
Yes, sir. That was addressed with the preliminary plat.
I'll need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Smith Oaks, 11 lots located off Rosemont Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for Whispering Pines, Section 4 Alpha.
Yes, sir. This is the second review of this final plat. This one went through a little bit of a different process. This is located off William Few Parkway in the Whispering Pines PUD. It is 92 lots. The location kind of towards the back of Whispering Pines. And the zoning and kind of general location, you can see the subdivision already shows up on maps online. You did see this plat back in May of 2020 and reviewed the subdivision at that time. At that time, the construction was not complete, so now that they have the as-built, it's working back through the process for the dedication of the improvements and the acceptance of the infrastructure. So y'all are seeing it for a second time. There's no changes to the lot layout or dimensions, so it was approved at the time with a condition. Well, there's your existing site. They did get the road paved, so their construction is at least most of the way complete at this point. It was approved with a condition that the connection to Clanton Road be completed before any building permits were pulled. This is your, that connection, it has been finished, so staff is recommending approval without that condition.
Is Keith Lawrence the applicant on this?
Yes, sir.
I don't see him in the crowd tonight. I had a question for him. Okay, gentlemen, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Whispering Pines 4A, 92 lots located off William Few Parkway.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 4-0. Mr. Butler, plan revision, R file RZ 20-12-06.
This is a request for a minor PUD revision out at 729 Reynolds Road, otherwise known as Wrights Farm, addition of a lot for a sales office and some clarification on some signage for the property. It shows the location of the whole parcel. We're going to look at only a piece of it. Again, kind of off Reynolds Road and also Wrightsboro as well. Currently zoned, planning a development. But everything around it is zoned residential. There are a couple of S1s for churches here, and then this is Steve's Dairy, a random C1 that'll probably come for you guys in the next couple of months. Making an aerial view of the site, this is currently under development for a subdivision. This is an existing site photo, but that is not at all what it looks like currently, so just pretend you didn't see that. This is the plat for the property. This is the amenity area. So the request, before you have two of them, we're going to go over the office first. I do want to locate an office where the star is on their amenity area. If you go to the next slide, we'll see the proposed new lot that would be created. This is the small office here. One of the things that's a little different than this, we often see people request, or not people, but developers request the offices they can use as sales centers. Happens all the time across the county. This is the one that's a little different. They want to transition it from being an office into a residential house once they're finished with all the sales of the lots. A little different than normal. There is some concern from that with staff. There is a buffer required against a residential property, against, from a community recreation area into residential property, so they have a 20-foot buffer basically along this whole area. That's being discussed right currently. There is a condition that will kind of kick that issue down the road, as we'll see here in a moment. Of course, the office staff really has no concerns with it. If you go to the next slide, we'll see the proposed sales center, kind of a unique building. We do have a floor plan as well that looks a little different than the elevations, but then kind of showing, you know, how it could look for the sales center itself. In terms of signage, so when this went through for zoning back in, I believe, 2018, this was shown on their images of how they wanted to develop this as part of their architectural design of the whole place. This isn't a great scan here, but there was signage on the barn, on the roof of the barn. However, within their narrative, they did say that they wouldn't have any signage on the barn, just one of those that, we know, we talked about it, I believe we talked about it with Planning Commission, but it never really made it into the narrative clearly. This is actually constructed, but the, this is actually a Photoshop, one of the best Photoshop's I've seen of putting a sign on a barn. This is the proposed signage, and it is on the, on the roof.
Saying that because you did it?
What was that?
Saying that because you did it?
No, I didn't do it. I'm not that talented. Anyway. If we go to the next slide, this is future land use, it's in neighborhoods, character area. Again, it's already been approved for the use itself, is just adding a few things to it. In terms of that, staff does recommend approval to following conditions. First sign on the barn is limited to a total of 168 square feet. It'll be located, it's shown on the front elevation, and gable signs will be shown as divided on the front mockup as well. Then we do have a condition, the building permit will not be issued to expand or modify a sales office into a residence until the PUD revision, we kind of talked about before, which eliminates that buffer, reduces or what have you, is addressed. Our utility has one as well for making water and sewer taps for the new lot, and also separate LDP for the lot in terms of the development of it. Please, staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Go back to the floor plan. It went by fast. This is different than what's on here. So instead of a kitchenette, it's a full kitchen. We received the drawing of the proposed add-on after.
This is the only drawing that I've ever seen that's different than what we received at the beginning. The applicant is, or was here, or is here, sorry, in the other corner.
Mr. Mills, would you come forward and see if you can help Mr. Henderson out, please?
If you wouldn't mind, just maybe, just with your finger, just kind of give us, just to draw.
Give us your name and address, too. Matt?
So?
Matt, go ahead and give us your name and address for the record.
Matt Mills, 3009 Lake Forest Drive, Augusta, Georgia. Southeastern, we're the developer of the subdivision in question. This was a, one version of how the sales center could be modified to become occupable, become occupiable by buyer or tenant. Currently, we, this adds a shower here. This adds a full kitchen here. Our intention is to build this in with.
Okay.
We could add a shed roof later and expand it to have a full bathroom. We could expand this later and make the bedroom bigger. Or we could expand and make a full kitchen. So this was one example of, I think there's probably a bunch of different ways to skin the cat to expand this and make it into a residence long-term. But this was the only version that, short version to turn it into like a small efficiency kind of house, occupiable. That being said, tonight, we're just asking for the location to be approved. It's centralized to the subdivision. I think it makes sense. Three hundred unit subdivision, close to parking. Be able to easily provide handicap access to the sales center. Our goal is to build a nicer sales center than what you typically see. That is in keeping with our amenity package, which is more farm-style architectural design. So I think it's in keeping with everything we've done. We're really today asking for the approval of the location. And like Will said, we've kind of, the condition kicks the can down the road as to what we do. I have taken the caution to go ahead and put in the covenants that at some point the developer reserves the right to sell this residence if he so chooses, so that it, here will be notified that that's available. Yet, we just closed, I think, our thirtieth lot today, so there's not been a house built. But agents will communicate to all the buyers that long-term transfer, may transfer to residence. Obviously, we'll have to come back before this body. It's full commission to get that approved.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
What other purpose would it have if you just left it aside? You know, you're, you're done, your last house is, is sold. Is it, could it serve another purpose as part of the amenities?
We've kind of gone round and round, but they're, in this building right now, have a reception area, conference room, and a small kitchenette. Not really, how does the rest of the subdivision benefit from it? They don't. Generally speaking, you build something cheap, doesn't look good. My goal is, hey, let's build something nice, put hard pine floors in it. So let's, let's be a better platform for ourselves, agents to sell houses from, and it'll be a better asset to the community from a cosmetic standpoint.
It's too far from the pool to be like an annex of the clubhouse?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in walking distance, but it's a good, you know, supposed to be built.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is not a public hearing, so I need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two zero one two zero six. Minor putter revision for Rights Farm to allow roof signage and additional lot sales office.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Mystery, temporary use.
Yes, so this is a temporary use for nine two seven Colleen Drive on two point seven nine acres. Current zoning is RA residential agricultural, and the request is for a mobile home to stay while the home is being built. This is the location. The zoning showing RA. This is the close-up aerial, and it shows where the mobile home is now. And then the new house will be built here. And just for the time of being under construction, that's the request for the, for the mobile home to be, remain there, and staff recommends approval.
This is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? They need a motion to approve, deny or to table?
I make a motion to approve the temporary authorization.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. And before we start our public hearing, if we could take a two-minute recess, potty break. I know it. Thank you. All right, we'll resume at seven fifteen. And Ms. Neal, I believe you're up for file RZ two zero one two zero one.
See, my applicant is in the restroom. I don't know if you.
Okay, that's fine.
Want to still wait a minute, or?
You started it.
That young lady? Yeah, we, we passed her in the hallway.
You can go ahead and, and do the, the, the staff presentation.
Okay. All right, so this is a request for a conditional use at thirty-five ninety-four Mistletoe Road on ten point six six acres. Currently zoned R four recreational residential. This shows the location of the site off of an easement just off Mistletoe Road. It shows the R four zoning of the site and the aerial of the site. And this shows the existing site. So the request before you tonight is for a conditional use in order to replace the single-wide mobile home that's currently on the property with a newer single-wide mobile home. Per county code, current county code, a single-wide may be permitted by the Board of Commissioners as long as the property is five-plus acres and at least a minimum building setback, front setback of a hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line of the street. She's off of an easement, so she reaches that. And has over five acres. The existing single-wide manufactured home is non-conforming and is allowed to remain on the site in its current state. However, she would like to replace it with a newer one. So she has to bring it up to current county code. It shows the plat of the property. And this shows the future land use map, which is in the rural character area, which is intended for agricultural uses and large lot residential uses. And she meets that and with a single-family residential intent for the rural character area. Staff recommends approval.
We'll do roll call. Is the applicant here? No. I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ two zero one two zero one. Initially used for a single-wide manufactured home at thirty-five ninety-four Mistletoe Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay. Question? All in favor? Prove carries four zero.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to surprise her when she came back in.
I didn't realize you were here with her.
No, you're fine.
Same deal.
You're fine. All right, let's see.
Now you're all off.
Yeah, I, we're, we're splitting the page here. Mr. Butler, file RZ two zero one two dash zero two, part one.
Yes, sir. It's a request for a rezoning from S one and R two to R one on a total of five point seven seven acres located off Cox Road, portions of Cox Road, and also portions of Meadow Lane. Existing use for a residence and a nursery. Rezoned R one as for existing residents. Here's the location of the properties in question on the north side of Cox Road. Also the current zone. You can see that this is, this one here is split-zoned, S one and R two. This S one is actually the first S one in Columbia County, so it's.
Oh, you're here? We thought, we didn't think you were here, and we just denied it. You're already done, ma'am. You're approved and good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Y'all have a good night.
Mr. Butler, please continue.
So again, for first S one in Columbia County, so it's, again, has some history to it. Again, the request is to basically get rid of the S one that we're looking at and kind of move it down to the north a little bit. Again, everything around it, you have more R two across the street, and then you have C one to the east here. Here's the air view of the property. And also the existing site on Cox Road. And the overall plat, this does show the, so you have here the existing property line. That'll be abandoned. You'll be moving the R one, this area, and then the remainder of this R one as well. Giving an idea of what's, what's going, going on with this. There's a part two to this that addresses these properties.
Should we take these separately or together?
I would take them separately, just to keep them.
All right.
Clear with, in terms of that.
All right.
In terms of future land use, this is within a neighborhood's area. Residential use is perfectly fine here. The area that's getting revised, you know, wasn't really used for the nursery. It was kind of a, in, in the future, it could have been. The request to R one, why it's going to R one is there's no sewer available there. So R two is supposed to have sewer attached to it. That's not possible with this one, so that's why it's going to R one with the request. In terms of the requests, really no issues with this. Again, returning to, you know, what it was previously. There is a condition with it. Again, a revised plat for an area to be rezoned to R one and any property line modifications. We filed in six months of approval by the Board of Commissioners and the County Department. We've actually already seen that, but it hasn't actually gone through yet. But that's the only condition on the request.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? If this is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
My name's James Cartledge. I reside at One Cartledge Way in Evans, off Bellar Road. I'm the owner of Springwood Nurseries, and my dad, Otis Cartledge. This is his property, the home place where I grew up and nursery there. And Dad's ninety years old, and he's trying to get his estate in order. He's trying to make sure property, my sister is supposed to get the old home place. So that's why the nursery was actually started down there. That's why I spring wood, because it was a spring in the woods down there. He started growing plants and that sort of thing. Anyway, that's a, but to give my sister and, and the home place the buffer, that's why they're redrawing second part of this request, the property line a little bit, to get a little more buffer from the nursery property. We're not changing the use of the nursery business, landscape, construction business, all, all of that. And I've been running there for forty years. It's been there for forty-two years, but it's mainly just to try to prepare things for passing by my parents.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. Sir, if you'd have conversations, sir. Sir, if you, would you like to come forward? No, I just, I just thought, I thought you were coming up to say something in the microphone. Okay, thanks, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condus, conditions, RZ twenty dash twelve dash two.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Prove carries four zero. Mr. Butler, part two of the major S one revision.
I think this is a revision at forty-five forty-five and forty-five forty-one Cox Road and forty-five oh three and forty-five oh five Meadow Lane. It comes as a total of one point seven four acres. Currently zoned S one special, existing use for a nursery. Major revision to alter the property lines. Shows the location of the properties we've saw in the previous one.
Sir, if I could ask you to take your discussions outside, we've got a meeting going here.
So the four that we're seeing here are what's being addressed with this. It shows the zoning of the property. We'll go into that again. And also the air view of the site and the existing site as well. And the overall plat. So the revision that's happening here is, you know, currently is drawn with this shown here. The revision will move that property line to here. And it's slight alteration of that. And again, as Mr. Cartledge said, it was for, to provide more of a buffer between the residence and the business itself. Again, in terms of future land use, it's been here for over forty years, really not caused any sort of issues that we're aware of within the area. It's actually reducing the size of the S one. Not, it also no change anything outside of moving the property lines around. Same condition as, as before with the revised plat. However, there is an additional one with this one because it is a major S one revision. That just kind of clarifies that any future expansion of the area is on S one will require a major or minor revision depending on what they're asking for. More of a, you know, just a notice that there is the possibility this could be, have to be rezoned in the future. That clear, staff recommendation.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Cartledge, you have anything you'd like to add to this? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, or with the conditions, RZ twenty twelve dash oh two.
Do your second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ two zero one two zero three.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major revision to the River Island planned unit development. This is for the property at six twelve Wimble Court. And this is located kind of at the back of River Island, back near the river, and is currently part of River Island PUD. So all of the properties around it are also zoned PUD. This is the aerial of the site. And the site is currently under construction for a residential house, so it doesn't quite look like this anymore. Looks more like this. They are constructing a retaining wall as part of this development. The, the lot has quite a bit of slope to it from Wimble Court down to Marsh Point. And to kind of make up that grade, they are building this wall. And the intent is for that to connect to a wall on the adjacent property, which we'll be seeing in a moment. Therefore, it will, at a certain point, cross into the building setbacks in order to make that connection. That wall is ten feet tall, so it is above the six feet that's allowed. And it will additionally, of course, have safety fencing on top of it. For obvious reasons, we don't want anyone falling off of the wall. So the, the total height for the retaining wall and the fence will be approximately sixteen feet within that building setback. And so this is the site plan showing where that would happen. It is just this small area right here where it is within the setback that we're concerned with for the revision purpose. It's a minor intrusion in that respect, and staff is recommending approval of that.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Mr. Mills, would you come forward and give us your name, home address, and we know you, but the other folks may not?
Um, yeah, Matt Mills, three zero zero nine Lake Forest Drive, Augusta, Georgia. Um, I don't know that I'm the applicant on this one. At the same time, several issues, the retaining wall issue, which I don't, only issue because it crosses into the setback, because that by necessity happens. I don't know if you can vote on it. Just the retaining wall today, I think, after reading staff's recommendations as it relates. Driveway issue.
Matt, this is a separate one.
This is the separate one.
Okay.
One next door.
This is the one next door, just the.
Okay, well, I, Southeastern Family Homes owns a lot. I'm an owner of Southeastern Family Homes, so if we were doing it separate, you got any questions?
Well, there, there's two visions in there. So this is the lot that only has the retaining wall. The one with the driveway issue is the next item.
All right.
Right now. Sorry, I didn't do the applications this time. I usually do.
So you got nothing, is what you're telling us?
I got nothing. I can't answer any questions.
You're good.
All right, sir.
I'm here for a vote.
Okay, you can sit down now.
He's here for cheap entertainment.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two zero one two zero three. Major revision to allow a retaining wall and fence to exceed six feet in height within the side setback.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Prove carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ two zero one two zero four.
Yes, sir. This is the major revision for the adjacent property at six fourteen Wimble Court. This is also part of the River Island PUD. There are two elements to this revision request. The first is the, the retaining wall height issue that we saw with the previous one. Again, where those walls will connect and therefore cross the property line, cross into the building setbacks. The other is related to the driveway location for this property. Again, this property is at the back of River Island, near the river, is part of the River Island PUD, and is kind of on the end of the cul-de-sac here with frontage on both Wimble Court and Marsh Point Road. Is the existing site, again, quite a lot of topography on these properties. They are falling, you know, pretty quickly downhill towards the river from Wimble Court. This is standing at Wimble Court, looking down that slope, so you can kind of see why the retaining walls are needed on these sites. And this is the site plan showing where that wall will, will go on this property, where it's intended to be built in the small portion within the, the building setback, again, where it crosses over to tie into the wall on the adjacent property. Similar, similar height on this one as well. It'll be about nine and a half feet where it crosses the property line, crosses into the setback within a six-foot fence on top of it, so we are. So we are looking at that 16-foot total height again. Again, with the topography on the site, we don't really see an issue with allowing that. They really need that retaining wall in place to be able to build on this lot. And the other aspect of this is the driveway access. You can see on this plan, they do have the driveway shown off Marsh Point Road. This is a little bit different. This just clarifies the wall height. That was in there. This section of River Island is a unique section according to the River Island narrative. It is intended to have rear access for the homes off of these alleys. So this is Wimble Court here. Across the street, they also have alley access for those homes. So these are all intended to be accessed from these rear kind of service roads to keep the driveways off of the main Marsh Point Road, allowing kind of better views on that area be intent. This is the existing development on Marsh Point, obviously not fully built out yet, but so far, all of those houses have been able to comply with that. They all have their driveways on those alleys. It's pedestrian access down to the main road there. So the applicant has contended that the access on Wimble Court is very tight, that it, you know, doesn't, doesn't suit his needs on the property. It is very similar to the other lots in this area. It is the narrowest frontage on the, on the Wimble Court cul-de-sac, would only by about a quarter of a foot. The adjacent lot has very similar frontage, is on the cul-de-sac in a very similar situation to this property and has already been developed. So it does appear that it is possible to build a driveway on this property. Both the applicant and the engineer have confirmed that. It is possible to get a car in and out of this property. The concern is mainly with larger vehicles, trucks or SUVs getting in and out. The other surrounding properties that have pulled building permits to date have all done their driveways on Wimble Court in keeping with the PUD, including, you can see, this is the neighboring property that I just mentioned that's very similar situation to the parcel we're looking at tonight. And this is what those houses look like. This is from the Wimble Court side, so you can see their access, how the driveways and the garages are working on these lots. These are photos submitted by the applicant showing that the way that vehicles are getting in and out of these lots, the construction vehicles, the larger trucks and such is by running over a portion of that cul-de-sac that's rock. So he submitted these as kind of proof of that, how they're, how the turning radius is, is or is not working. This is the elevations of the proposed house. It has been submitted for a building permit. It is a little over 10,000 square feet, four stories, so, you know, pretty good-sized house. It's staff contention that there, there's alternative development plans for this property that would allow the property to use the Wimble Court access. Some of the options may include a second-story garage instead of a first story. You can see right here, this would be the garage facing Marsh Point. It does have a second story above it. Flipping these spaces, it would be a fairly simple way to have the garage access from Wimble Court. There is about that much difference between the elevations. While it's certainly not maybe as easy, it is a little more creative solution, more in keeping with the intent of the PUD. The staff is recommending disapproval of the relocation of the driveway and approval with conditions of the retaining wall height revision. Those are similar to what we saw as far as the retaining wall with the first application, the cold joint, the total allowed height. It does include a couple other conditions that address the driveway from water utility and from planning. That concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, the staff? Mills, are you representing the property owner, the applicant?
Property owner and applicant is here. Any questions for him? At the same time, I think after reading staff's recommendations, there's a couple things we hadn't even discussed with staff that I think are overriding, they changed their minds because I don't know, there's some of those things that we, we'd actually like to ask if we could defer until the January meeting to meet with staff on-site to talk about what I think are bigger pictures. To me, if...
Want to table until the first meeting or the second meeting?
The first meeting.
Yeah, if that works for...
January 7th.
January 7th, okay. All right. So you're requesting to table the entire item, both garage...
We'd love to go ahead and settle the retaining wall, but the driveway is really the issue, I think that...
We can separate them if you...
All right. All right, thank you, sir. We had a request from the applicant to sitter the retaining wall and to table the driveway issue until the January 7th meeting. Gentlemen, if y'all are okay with that, we'll accept a motion to that effect or you can take my statement as the motion.
So moved.
Do I hear a second on that?
Second, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, all in favor to approve the retaining wall and to table until January 7th for the driveway? All in favor?
Just to clarify, that was approval with conditions on the retaining wall?
Yes, ma'am, approval with conditions, that's correct. Seconds to hold with conditions? Second holds. Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, Mr. Butler, got file RZ 201205.
Sure do. This is a request for rezoning off Horizon South Parkway and Wrightspur Road on 23.23 acres from C2 to M2 for industrial uses. The location of the property on the, basically, north side of Wrightspur and the east side of Horizon South Parkway, there is a little piece that's in Grove Town that is not up for rezoning this evening. That is zoned, however Grove Town has it zoned. There's like, are the zone of the property and currently zoned C2. You have the Horizon South Industrial Park around it, not around it, but to the, the north. And kind of one thing too, to kind of mention this before we get into it, this used to be a part of this development. It was taken, it was rezoned out of it, but it still has the covenants that carry over from it. The idea is to, the rezoning is to bring it back in M2 and kind of have it be a part of that development again. And then across, then the rest of, the rest of the developments are all Grove Town, mixture of commercial and residential development. There's aerial view of the site. Again, it's, has some environmental issues, probably looking only at these two areas for development of the site. Existing sign on Wrightspur Road, basically across from GIW and on the existing sign on Horizon South. And the plot of the property, kind of, again, kind of showing you, you know, kind of what's available on the property. But typically, we do have a concept plan that you guys look at. However, really going back into the industrial park, the development authority has written us a letter saying that they're totally fine with us coming back in. We don't really see a need to have a concept plan or something like this in this situation. Future land use, this is within the Gateway Activity Center. That is intended for commercial development. This end of it is more industrial, however, we do see this as fitting within, or that change fitting within the intent of that activity center. I do those factors. Staff does recommend approval, the request of rezoned M2 for industrial uses. This is staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, the staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir.
I'm here on behalf of Jonathan Crawford. I told him since I was here, I'd be happy to handle it for him. This is a piece of property we just recently purchased from, it's all good. There are covenants tied to this property and it's always been the county's desire, development authorities' desire to keep this industrial kind of going along with their wishes. I think it's the best use. It is industrial. If it's already zoned, industrial will help it, help the development authority property covenants say. Sense to go ahead and...
Thank you, sir.
Grove Town to go ahead and that little piece back?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask if we had a representative from Grove Town since they've asked us to annex this into Grove Town.
I don't believe we do, but for clarity's sake, the portion that is in the city limits is CC. So it is commercially zoned, so it may be something that the applicant might want to take into consideration...
Split zoning.
In the future, if there's a development that comes forward, that may be something to sue with Grove Town to rezone that if, because it is zoned commercial on the Grove Town side.
Is that a slipper though, is it?
It could very well be. I don't know the...
That's the reality is this, this property's 20-something acres, but it only has 12 acres, two little islands of high ground in the middle.
End user may be particular about it, but just unnoticed.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 201205, rezoning from C2 to M2 off of Horizon South Parkway.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. We have no legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
Just one from staff. We'd like to thank you for your year of service. I know this was a little bit of a challenging year with all that has gone on and we do thank you for your service and your time and effort here on behalf of Columbia County.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate the staff and I'd like to take an opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, be safe during the holidays. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, public comments? It's an opportunity to come up and speak on anything you'd like to speak about as opposed to just what was on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, I'll... Oh, yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Craig Peel, 1037 Forest Ridge Trail. I just really wanted to come up here and talk since everybody's been up here talking all evening long. Y'all all a Merry Christmas.
You're on a timer.
That's it. That's it. That's all I had to say to y'all.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? We got a comedian in the room, so... Gentlemen, the time for adjournment is upon us. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the adjournment? All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries four zero, 7:41. Merry Christmas and be safe over the holidays. We'll see you back here on January 7th at 6:30.
7:30.